Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Wednesday, November 30th, 2022. It's nine oh four AM. My name is Time Answer, Vice Chair of the Board. Commissioner, he is excused today. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards participating through Zoom. County Manager is also excused today, and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell is here. And we have key staff from our Solid Waste Division of Public Works. Public can follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. The topic this morning is compost procurement ordinance briefing. And we have an hour. So with that, Jeff Bigford here from Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. I'll just turn it straight to you.
So Jeff Bigford, Solid Waste Manager in the Public Works Department.
I'm Dean Bennett, Senior Program Manager with Public Works.
So you may, before we even start, I know it's the first time you have had the opportunity to meet Dean. He's actually been with us for about eight months now. Again, he's a Senior Program Manager in the Solid Waste Division, so anyway, I haven't had the opportunity to say. This is his first time, I think, being in front of the board, so.
Yes, I saw your presentation to the climate group, so nice to see you in person. Okay.
So I'm here today to talk about a proposed compost procurement ordinance. Let me kind of go back to, we have a PowerPoint available to show.
I'm so sorry, I was just checking.
You have the PowerPoint available to show?
Oh, we do have it up here. Do you want me to run it or you want to run it?
I'll let you probably do this, go to the next slide. So it's a. Right click.
Uh, you can just click the screen as you want.
Randy, is there a way to put the, uh, participants in the corner, just in case someone wants to wave their hand at me or?
Commissioner, we're not seeing the PowerPoint on the screen.
Interesting. Yeah, well, we're seeing it huge, like above everything else, so we'll get it fixed.
Okay.
Share the screen, Randy. Give us a moment.
There, we've got it now.
Are you seeing that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, they're seeing what they need to see, and I'm seeing what I need to see, so.
Very good, thank you. So I'll let it put the backup on why we're here and how we're at here today. In the last, most recent legislative session in the winter of 2022, a bill, House Bill 1799, passed through both bodies and signed by the Governor in March. The bill is basically, was meant to address the recovery of organics, particularly yard debris and food, and food waste. And really, kind of the key behind that is, is related to climate, climate action. Because when yard debris and food waste go into the landfill, they tend to break down and generate methane. Which, you know, while sometimes it's recovered, sometimes it's recovered in landfills. And you know methane is a strong, you know, it's stronger as far as our potent greenhouse gas than CO2. So the idea is to try to capture more of that, keep out of the landfill, and try to prevent that from happening in the first place. The bill was pretty broad, potentially in a lot of different areas. And it's going to give a kind of a quick overview to some of the areas the bill touched on, and we're going to focus more specifically on, on Part Seven. We'll get to that in a little bit. But really, but really, it's setting targets, specific targets for the collection of, of organics. Both, you know, yard debris and that type of organics, as well as food waste, with specific recovery-type goals. And I'll talk about that more here in the next slide. It is requiring that businesses that generate organics over a period of time, phases in, that they need to participate in having organic collections at those businesses. That's what Part Two of the, of the bill addresses. The third part, it updates the Washington Good Samaritan Act, and what that is about has to do more particularly with food, edible food recovery. As it is now, a lot of, like groceries and other food outlets, they have out of spec, or maybe it's past the, you know, Best Buy dates. It tests it's going the way, even though technically it's edible. And part of the issue, the reason why a lot of food companies, or groceries, or distributors will do that, is the fear of liability. If they donate that to a food bank, you know, if there's somebody who are getting sick off, that they, you know, might be sued for that. So the Part Three is looking to update that to release, you know, to create less liabilities for companies to donate food into, into food banks and put it back into the, as a food resource. Part Four is creating a Washington Center for Sustainable Food Management, and it's kind of looking at a new organization that will help to manage the food management piece. Part Five is funding and incentives for methane emissions reduction activities. So there's additional research, as well as looking at not just composting, not just composting, but, uh, like bio-reactors that can break it down. So looking at other, you know, different ways that they can, that can be processed. Part Six is looking to make it easier to permit new composting facilities or expand existing. Because of, you know, with this rule and the requirement to increase the amount of organics being collected. Right now, there's just not enough compost facility capacity that exists in the state to, as that occurs, to be able to process that. So this is basically trying to, working with the planning organizations, departments around the state, to make it easier to cite these types of facilities. Because that, we need more infrastructure related to that for this to be successful. Part Seven is the part we're going to talk about here shortly, is that there's a requirement that local governments create ordinance to procure finished compost and use it in projects that, where it's appropriate. And the last part of the, of the bill dealt with product degradability labeling. If there's, you've probably seen, where there are people, they see a plastic product like forks of tableware or plates that say compostable. Well, that's not always necessarily the case, so they're going to be really, get more strict on, you know, is it really compostable? Because a lot of what is product claimed to be does not break down sufficiently in the composting process, and then it's still, it's just a contaminant. So you want to make sure that, that products that are stating that are actually truly compostable. So the bill in general focuses on two primary goals, that stated goals. The first is to attain a 75% decrease in landfill organics by 2030. And the 75% decrease is compared to the amount of organics that were landfilled in 2015. So comparing it to the 2015 number, so we're looking to increase that number by 75% by 2030. The other key focus was to reduce the volume of edible food disposed by 20% by the year 2025. And so again, the key piece is really trying to get food that's, that's, that's usable and edible into food banks and other associations where it can go to the hungry. Just as an example, I mean, just even over the past month, I've seen it work. Food that was turned down from a local food distribution warehouse, where there's a full 40-foot box truck of perfectly cooked green bananas, many tons, that were just dumped to Thor, and it was an absolute shame. Likewise, you've seen other packaged products coming from a grocery outlet, same thing. Full, full drop box of potentially edible food, but they dump it because they're concerned about the liability. So again, we'll be, we'll be working on that, and we're going to be pushing to do additional education and outreach related to that to try to get more of that food to a place where it can be used and not wasted. So we, as per the ordinance, we are required, I'm sorry, per HP 1799, we are required to have a compost procurement ordinance, and we are actually required to have that done by January 1st of 2022, 2023. However, the timeline was so short, other, there's only, I think, one or two other counties in the state that are going to meet that specific deadline. But ecology is aware of our progress, and, you know, is satisfied that we're on the right, we're on track to get that done. So it's actually required in the law that we, that we have this ordinance. So to talk about, more about it, I'm going to let Dean tell you about the development and essentially what's, what's in the ordinance.
So regarding Point Seven on the, the last slide, we are required to develop an ordinance under the House bill. And so as part of that, Department of Ecology actually provided a template for counties and cities to use, which was very useful. And so our ordinance that you have a copy of follows that template very closely. And in addition, of course, adding some very Thurston County-specific items here and there. We had SWAC review the, the ordinance and receive their feedback in the September meeting. And in our October meeting, SWAC voted to carry the ordinance forward to the board and get it on the schedule for public, for public meetings. So SWAC comments, you will see in this version, were incorporated. And the, the key points to the ordinance. The first is that we, as a county, will strive to use finished compost 50% of what it is we receive. So whether it's self haulers, commercial haulers that bring us organic waste, yard waste, food waste, separate from the solid waste stream. We, that's, that's our total, and we are, as a county, under this House bill, are going to strive to use 50% of that volume of that weight in, as compost in county projects. Now, that's, that's a high bar, and I think ecology knows that. But I think the key in the first bullet here is that we will strive, and we will, to meet that. But this was specifically worded in the House bill to not be prescriptive, but to encourage jurisdictions to, to try and hit those goals, and, and we will. Second bullet, what are some of the uses for this increased compost volume that we are to, to be using? Landscaping projects, construction, post-construction soil amendments. Probably primarily in, in the stormwater group, applications to prevent erosion, filter stormwater runoff, promote the vegetative growth, and improve stability and longevity of roadways. And lastly, low-impact development lid, green infrastructure to, to filter the pollutants. We know, the science tells us, the compost is a very good matrix for filtering and cleaning water. Continuing on, what Thurston County is, is not, under this ordinance in this House bill, we are not required to use compost products if any one of the following bullets applies. Compost products are not available within a reasonable period of time for the project. That available compost products don't comply with purchasing standards or procurement standards. And also, available compost products do not comply with federal, state, or local health quality and safety standards. What is the standard? Well, the standard is, under this House bill, follows the recommendations of the U.S. Composting Council, which is the national council that actually have criteria on compost, what compost is, defining finished compost data. So that's what we are using in order to determine whether a compost is acceptable and can be considered compost according to the U.S. Composting Council. The other thing I want to mention here, and this is kind of important, we are also not required to use compost products if the cost for that product is more than 10% higher than an alternative material. So the, the House bill specifically addresses this not being financially burdensome to jurisdictions. And so this is sort of the, the check that they've built into it. We don't need to consider the use of compost if it's going to be, extend us too much financially in a project more than 10% of a light material, topsoil, gravel, et cetera. Outreach and reporting. One of the conditions is that we report this data to ecology, and it's going to be on every two-year cycle, beginning in 2024. And what we are required to do is conduct educational outreach to residents about the value of compost, how we, Thurston County, use as compost in projects. And secondly, we will take this data that we generate and report out the total tons of material that we divert each year. That would be the material coming into the drop boxes and, and the work, the volume and cost of the composted material that we purchase in Public Works and General Services for use in projects, and also the sources of the finished compost product purchased. We already do much of this outreach on the benefits of compost currently. So that sort of aligns with our current program as it is now.
So as far as next steps, questions? Are requesting that Public Works submit an AIS to set a public hearing to hear this proposed ordinance. Of course, hold that public hearing and hopefully is successful and, and we use it to appropriate, adopt this, this spring. So with, with that, well done for questions.
Who's sharing?
First, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
My first question would be, don't we currently use organics over in Republic, and then they're recovered in the form of gas, and then that's turned into electricity?
Yes, Commissioner, and so it goes over as garbage, of course, I mean, with organics extend. And you're correct, that all the organics that are in that, that solid waste and that garbage, as they break down at the Roosevelt landfill, they actually have a very good gas collection program and system. So they do collect that gas, and they turn it into alternative fuel. So you are correct, what, what isn't separated and brought to us as separated organics, you know, it ends up in Roosevelt, and that gas is collected. But, and ecology and the legislature knows that, but they're still looking to us to reduce the, the amount that goes there in the first place. Because some of that gas doesn't, I mean, while they do a good job of collecting gas and they get most of it, some of that still does escape on the open face of the landfill. So again, it's just, it was the legislative, legislature's desire to do more recovery, use more compost because of its benefits, and particularly get more food, particularly edible food out. Because it's, it's, it's a waste for it to go into a landfill when it could be feeding people.
Well, then, just as a follow-up to that, when we use somewhat decomposed organic material as lands, for landscaping, for an example, won't that continue to break down and increase the output of, you know, gas that we just soon didn't happen? I mean, I, I just wonder, I'm trying to figure out the, the benefit ratio of doing this, which, I mean, obviously, if the state said, we have to do it, we're doing it, but I'm trying to figure that out. What is that benefit ratio, or, or am I mistaken on the fact that it will not break down anymore?
That's a good question. Typically, for, you know, for it to be certified by one of the certifying organizations, it has to have been broken down to a certain point where it's more or less stabilizes. So typically, it comes in, it gets ground up, they put it into the windrows, and it's aerated. They typically dry it through it to speed up that process. And it breaks down over a matter of four to six weeks. Then typically, it's allowed to rest for a period of time, and then, you know, by whatever additional decaying goes on in that period, but there's not much left at that point usually. And it needs to be reasonably stabilized before they sell it, because if, if it's not, and it's still really active, and you put it, for example, out on ag land and seed it, if it's still active, it can actually be fatal to the seeds and small seedlings because it starts to heat up, and there's, so it, it needs to be stabilized, but typically, if, you know, for a good quality commercial product, before it's typically sold and put out, put out there, so. And since they're requiring it to be a certain standard, we would expect that to be the case.
Okay, I, I guess the other piece of this question would be, I mean, we're going to need more and more electrical production. And, you know, if we're going to go to electric vehicles and such, we're going to need more electricity on the grid if we're going to heat with electricity. I'm just kind of curious, how come we wouldn't want to somehow recover more gas to turn it into electricity? But maybe that's detrimental, too. So, no, sounds, sounds good. I'm, I'm pretty well covered on it. Just kind of a little confused on what the benefits might be overall.
Well, that's a good, you actually raised a good point, because I just want to mention that, you know, it's not, when it enters collective, it's not restricted to just composting. That there's digesters, that, you know, it says it needs to go to an organics processing facility. It doesn't specifically say compost. That's probably the most common. But there are digesters, for example, wastewater treatment facilities use digesters for their sludge. Organics can also go into digesters if that, that gas is captured, is created and captured. So that is also an option, and that is, and that issue falls into, under the realm of what's allowable as far as the end destination for the organics that are collected. So, so actually, that, that is a possibility, you know, and I would expect that we'll start to see more of that as the technology continues to get better, where some of this organic, particularly the food waste in particular, would go through a digester, and the gas collected and cleaned up and used either as an alternative fuel, either to run it, you know, run power, or as a biofuel to run into vehicles potentially.
Okay, well, thanks.
When you guys were talking about, you, trying to make sure I'm not missing a step. So there's, there's the inputs into the system, I forget what you called that. But anyway, you know what I'm talking about, all the tonnage that comes in. And then you were talking about use of compost products. So is there, in between that, like, somebody dumping all their yard waste at the work versus a compost product? Who's creating that product? Who's paying to create that product? I mean, what, what, and then, because then you're saying the law is requiring us to use compost products, but we don't necessarily have compost products, right? We've got, we've got dumped, so we have to send it somewhere to?
Correct. And, and like, for example, right now, you know, work is where it all goes. And, and right now, it's currently going to Silver Springs, down near, near. So, so that the one piece.
Process this plant in Mason County, right?
Correct, and, and it'll be going over to Brady and starting May 1st. So basically, the pieces we're reporting is, okay, the ecology wants to know, so what, how many tons of organics did we receive and send to a processing facility every year? We have that because they cross our scales, we report that piece. And then it goes to a, a facility such as either, you know, Brady or whoever, and there's, you know, there's Cedar Grove up in Seattle, whoever, whoever the local processing facility is, they do their thing. So we're right now, we're, of course, we pay, or will pay, you know, for them to accept it, you know, haul it, grind it, compost it. We're paying a set fee per ton right now. Maybe we'll continue to do that, just a different, company, different fee. And then they, you know, the company will, in turn, once they're done processing it, will sell it to whoever, you know, landscapers, contractors, general public potentially. So, so we would need them, in our projects, you know, we would put out a bid, for example, so we need, you know, it's a road project, do the road, and we have some landscaping, so we'll have, and this is our, let's say, 100 cubic yards of compost that we need to complete this project. So that's what we report, is how much compost did we have to purchase to do our projects? And that would be the other, one of the other reportables to ecology every year. So between all the projects that Thurston County is doing, what was the aggregate of, of purchased compost for that year?
So there's not really anything changing, well, there's education and probably trying to get that, that tonnage down. But, but aside from that, there isn't really anything changing in the process. It comes in, it goes off to the processing thing. What, what, what it sounds like we're trying to do at that point is to buy back 50% of what, of what went there to, to use in our to to use in our county projects and that's thought to be maybe attainable, although maybe ambitious.
It's very ambitious, I'll put that because we have a lot of yard debris that comes out here.
That's the concept and and what I'm talking about when we're talking, okay, so. And and then we have requirement and then and then the next step of that is that, because you said that goal is like ambitious and aspirational and to its two degree. But then you said there's exceptions we're not required to use. And obviously, the converse or whatever that word is of that is that we are required to use them unless they fall into one of these exceptions.
Correct.
And and that's not the case today, or I mean, that's not the case before House Bill seventeen-nine-nine.
Correct, there was no requirement for, I mean, there is the, again, striving to do, the fifty percent was already existed. It's it's actually already in in code, but just again, it's striving.
Now they're putting a little more meat to it by saying, you're going to have to use it to the extent possible unless you fall, unless it's too expensive, doesn't meet standards for whatever the project is.
Okay, and really, the 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 logic behind this and then the reason behind this is if they're going to, you know, require all this additional material to go to composting or other types of processing facilities to make it work, there needs to, you know, if you can produce, you know, huge quantities of compost, but if nobody is using it, what are you accomplishing? There's the, so they're basically trying to create the markets to a limited extent because it's only given agencies. So they're forcing us to be part of the markets to help, you know, keep that rolling, make it cost beneficial for the companies to be able to gear up and expand their composting facilities.
Is there any difference to, so i- is there any difference in what we're required? You said we're going to send more material to these facilities, but aren't we already doing that? I mean, what's the difference between the previous and the current in terms of what we have to send where?
Actually, for this county, this isn't applied everywhere else, but we actually, curbside yard debris is available already countywide. That's not, you know, even in the rural areas, if you want it, you can subscribe to it. That's not necessarily the case in a lot of other counties. So we're actually pretty well set up as far as the infrastructure, as far as the, from the hauling perspective and the collection perspective is is well set up. So we will continue to do what we're doing now as well, except at the work and send it to a processing facility. So from that aspect, it's pretty straightforward for us. It's the really, the additional work would be the additional education outreach, additional reporting that we'll need to do to them. And then monitoring and utilizing as appropriate, you know, the compost in the projects and reporting that out. So that's really the newer part of it. I mean, as far as the infrastructure of of collection and sending it to the processing, that exists and is is working well at this point.
There's something like, I don't remember exactly your process, but there's something that's done to, like, separate out, you know, contaminated streams or, I mean, or is that just is that just purely like we rely on the public to 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 in good faith, follow the rules? Okay, so we don't really.
Education at that point. And if, if, you know, when they get a curbside load, for example, of yard debris, they get tipped. There's very large, obvious contaminants, the waste connection to who operates that piece, they'll pull those out. Like everyone's always, yeah, a whole yard debris cart in there, you know, in fact, they dropped the whole cart.
Right, right.
So they'll pull that out, but there's still, you know, some plastic bags, some pizza boxes.
Okay, we're not required to do anything new on that, in terms of that. We just have to have it available that that people can do the separate. Because you said, it's, right now, it's like you subscribe to it.
Yeah, you can if you want to.
And that's good enough.
Or so, yeah, which we get a lot of self hauls as well, so we'll continue to do that. Again, we'll want to push harder on reducing the contamination that, which is primarily through the education process, just to reduce that contamination level to get a cleaner product. And then when, later on, when the businesses are starting to be required to add that, which happens over the next several years, it'll be education related to that to helping the businesses provide a clean product as well. So that's, that falls into the education aspect and not really specifically tied to this, but.
Okay, again, my last kind of issue, question area is the, so. Okay, I guess we would never, okay, I think I, I think my question doesn't make sense because I wasn't understanding that we were being buying it back essentially from a processing center. Because I was, I was thinking about, if it was something we had, I was like, well, can we use it? Like, you know, we're trying to promote, let's say, for example, a stormwater or low impact development. Like, we want to promote low impact development or we want to, we want to promote not shoreline armoring, but natural sway, bio sway, all that stuff, you know, and can we use, could we incentivize those types of projects that maybe our shoreline plan would require by saying the county can help you with this? But that is really a different thing because we have to purchase it back.
We do.
It's not something that we control.
Correct, because the compost, like Brady, as example, their model is based upon, you know, getting a certain, you know, there's the fee that they get for that as well as that sales, that material is how they make that, you know, cost effective for them. So that that needs to be sold out.
Okay, very good. Assistant County Manager, anything you wanted to ask these guys? Okay, Commissioner Edwards, any follow up before we?
You know, I guess just one follow up is how are we doing on the compactor? Maybe we could get a quick brief, I guess, on that.
Sure, it's functioning well. We had a condition assessment performed at the end of July, early August that that identified a few things that should be done and there's. One has been done, but the last one that needs to be done involved ordering a part that had a four month lead time. So once that part comes in, that will be completed as well. So it's, it's, it's been doing well, this as of yesterday, first thing, nice clean floor, we're getting containers, which is good, we haven't had any stoppages, I probably just jinxed myself, but it's all been going well. Along that line, as you, I'm sure you saw in the CIP plan, as we are looking to purchase a new compactor to, that we would replace that one with, we would, we would hold that that compactor and hang on to it because the thought is when we do a work reconfiguration, which is a project that's coming up, we've spoken about, because we would like to have two compactors so we have some redundancy. So if one goes down, the other is potentially available. So so that'll be dependent upon CIP approval, but but right now, it's, it's working well.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, gentlemen, thank you so much. Anything else you need to let us know?
So if it pleases the board, we would like to bring forward an AIS to set a public hearing.
Commissioner Edwards, are you supporting bringing forward the public hearing AIS?
Sure, and I guess I'd just ask, Commissioner Mahia is on the SWAC, so you said unanimous support there from the SWAC. I take it she's already been filled in on all this, right?
Correct, she, she has heard this as well.
Okay, so you got two, two thumbs up for that direction toward the the next step that you outlined that bring the AIS to set a public hearing.
Perfect.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.